Welcome everyone, good evening. I would like to call the Sherburne School Committee meeting to order at 6:33. And let's start off with community comments. Looks like we have none. So we'll move on to Dr. Brown's report, please.
Well, that was quick. Good evening. Good evening. We are, we're just a little confused by the weather. It's hot, it's cold, but other than that, things are going swimmingly at Pine Hill School. I mentioned in my report to the superintendent, the great feedback we've received from Pine Hill educators about the safety training that we had back in September. I imagine that will be discussed in more detail later. And then the following week, our educators had the opportunity to have a presentation by a child therapist on noticing and responding to kids who are struggling with anxiety or depression and how that can impact our students, our school, and ultimately tie in with school safety. So, back-to-back two Wednesdays of very meaningful professional development. We look forward to following up those trainings with ongoing discussion and practice, and I believe, I imagine, you'll probably talk in more detail. Another big highlight since our last school committee meeting, a month ago, we introduced Allison Gullings-Rude as our new assistant principal, but she hadn't officially started when she met you. She started a few days later. So, a month in, and she's still smiling, still standing, and taking great initiative at getting to know our students, our educators, our parents, taking over the important structures of looking at student data, helping teachers recognize students who aren't making effective progress, what kinds of supports we put in place. You launched our first child study meeting last week.
Yeah, last week we launched the first child study meeting, so it's been exciting to kind of look at that process and refine and clarify it for staff members and kind of try to have that holistic approach to help support our students, so.
We had a system in place that seemed logical at the time, that, you know, all of our students' data from year to year, but Allison just looked at it with fresh eyes, and now we save it differently, and the student data can be restored in a different way, so that teachers now will ultimately receive a longer trajectory of kids' progress over time. So, she's bringing some organization efficiencies and high technology. You've probably noticed the school newsletter. A few of you sent thank-you notes and complimented. It wasn't me, but I appreciate it. Allison has also taken over working with our Pine Hill Task Force, which is that, sort of that organic group of educators, teaching assistants, specialists, that started coming together a year or so with Jackie Daly, and again, bringing lots of climate of care and our core values to life and kids speak ways at Pine Hill that we're very proud of. Today, I happened to be in the gymnasium where our students who were being picked up in the car line wait, and it's a particularly hectic time of day for folks in the gymnasium, and there was very quiet Disney music playing, and children were doing mindful drawing, and they were sitting in organizations by grade levels, and I thought, oh my gosh, I don't even, I don't even recognize this place. So Allison's already putting her stamp in helping us to refine efficiencies and ways to care about children. So that's been great. I also wanted to talk about, at this point in the school year, we're busy sitting with all, having one-on-ones with all of our educators to establish their professional growth goals for the year, and there's a palpable connection between the district goals and the school goals, and the things that our educators are reaching for as professional practice goals and student learning goals. Lots of focus on climate of care, which is that social-emotional learning realm, cultural and identity proficiency, and certainly curriculum work. I thought our teachers would finally get a little breadth this year after we tied up science curriculum and math curriculum last year and English language arts curriculum, but don't you know, the state has released the draft of the long-awaited new social studies standards, and so we're quickly figuring out a plan for helping us to actualize, lots of shifts actually will come from those updates and long overdue. So, that's what the grown-ups have been focused on. There's a list of Pine Hill happenings and professional development activities that have been engaged in since our last meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Welcome, Allison. It's great you were at our last meeting, but now that you're, I can't believe it's been a month.
No.
Sometime I'd love to catch up about Seattle, because I used to live.
Definitely.
Thank you. All right, Ms. McCoy.
Sure. So, a few highlights on the professional development front that Dr. Brown touched on. We have reconnected with Teachers as Scholars, which is a professional development program, mainly housed at Harvard, but other Boston universities as well, that allows teachers to go for full days to engage with professors in content-specific areas. Last year, during our first year, we had heard a lot about it, that they wanted to reconnect, so we started a pilot program this year, and I sent out a list of course offerings that we were going to make available to them, and seats were gone literally within six hours, and I heard from teachers that I didn't even know checked email. So clearly, there is an interest, and we will expand that partnership next year to make sure that more teachers can get involved, because clearly that helps feed them, as Dr. Brown would say. Ed Leader 21 Conference, so three weeks ago now, I think, I got to travel to Phoenix with Ed Leader 21, who is the organization that kind of organizes The Portrait of a Graduate. So I was there with 700 other educators, some from Wellesley, Niedham, Franklin, and it was a full three days of talking about people's journey in terms of developing and identifying the competencies that we want of our graduates, and then what that means for classroom instruction around project-based learning, authentic assessments, and whatnot. And so, it was a very inspiring time. I'm definitely going to go back next year if all allows. You know, and I think, as I mentioned in my report, the most exciting thing is that instead of looking at this as a new initiative, it really coincides with Challenge Success really nicely, because as you know, Challenge Success has the space acronym of structure and schedule, which we've done a lot around precess and, you know, thinking about advisory and recess at the middle school. The P, the A, C, climate of care, clearly, you know, the Pine Hill promise, and that goes all the way up through about thinking about student social-emotional well-being, and the E being education. We've been providing the education for parents, for teachers, for kids. But P and A, those two pieces are kind of here and there throughout the district. We have great examples of project-based learning and authentic assessment, but it's not universal. And in comes Portrait of a Graduate as our means of getting there to make sure that, you know, we are giving students opportunities to grow those soft skills along with the content, you know, over the course of the years with capstones potentially in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 12th grade. So, that's really exciting. I sent out the email on Friday, and so far, we have 38 parents, K through 12, who are interested in joining the committee, as well as educators. Our Finland administrators will be joining us as well, because they'll have lots to say. And it is a great mix of people from higher ed, from other schools, from Dell, from anything you can imagine. So it'll be a great industry-broad community showing to talk about what we need for our graduates for college career and life. So that's that. November is only a month away. We have plans for the full day of professional development already. The morning, we'll have folks from the Ideas Institute and Common Train, our elementary, middle, and high school folks, about how to have difficult conversations with those levels of kids now that we're integrating pictures and perspectives and stories and voices into our curriculum. And then, we were lucky enough to be able to develop that partnership with Arts Emerson. There are many, many, many districts, Metco and otherwise, who are looking to have Mr. Joy, the play that talks about bias and stereotypes, come to their district, and they said yes to us, which is really exciting. So we'll have a showing for the faculty during the day, and then a post-discussion led by faculty themselves who are being trained, and then we'll have a showing for the community that evening at 6:30, so mark your calendars. And we will be also opening it up to Niedham, Medfield, Westwood, our local neighbors, who are also focusing on cultural responsiveness, so that we make sure we have a full auditorium, because it's really something you don't want to miss. MCAS are out. I'm sure you've got your results in the mail, and we'll do an analysis next month. And I think that's it. Questions?
Yeah, I was wondering about the new literacy and mathematics interventionist. So that was a grant that was found to cover that?
So between Title I and the REAP grant, we have been able to kind of rethink how we're providing interventions at Pine Hill, and so we have another person coming on board to support Ms. Wong, who does ELA interventions, and Ms. Mansfield, who does math, so that we can do additional Tier Two, so that we can catch those kiddos who need support for short amounts of time before they go up to that Tier Three, Special Education by Before Realm.
Is that a one-year grant?
Well, we, no, we get them annually, but the amounts kind of fluctuate from year to year, but I was at Pine Hill this morning and having a chat with Barb and Allison, talking about the RTI model and data teams, and it seems like we're really going to be able to solidify how we use the folks that we have, as well as the interventionists, and develop a system that works and collect data to prove it. So, one way or the other, if this is the model that works, we'll have to find a way to keep it.
Are students allowed to go in the evening to see Mr. Joy?
They are. We are going to put information out there about exactly what you're going to be seeing, and some of the themes and ideas that are coming up. We've involved Ellen Shagnan and our guidance counselors at the high school in the conversation. They've actually, two of them have actually seen the play, and their recommendation is that it's more of a PG-13 kind of show, and we'll make sure that parents are aware of that.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking high school, but yeah.
Definitely high school, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, thank you. Great. Dr. Q.
Well, thank you. Let me just quickly say how much I appreciate Barbara's point about the teacher's goals connecting with the district goals, and the district goals being reflected in the building goals. It's a really positive thing for us, and it's one of the things that I heard a lot about when I was transitioning in here, was that people wanted to be sure that we're not pulling in a lot of different directions. So many great things happening, but it's helpful to know that we're pulling in the same direction, and so that was music to my ears to hear that, Barbara. And Allison, thank you for joining us officially. I've heard nothing but positive feedback, and I know that you're going to do a great job. So my report is pretty self-explanatory, I know, but what I would like to point out are that these activities that I outlined, the parent coffees, for example, or the newsletter and blog, those two really align with the strategic plan, which we're now putting on the back of your agendas. So you can see that that actually, and if we had all of the initiatives or the priorities underneath that, which is in the longer plan, you would see that these kinds of things are directly related to goal number, or objective number three, partnerships with families and communities. So, I just did a kind of a quick exercise to hold myself accountable, and what we've talked about in the past is somehow putting those kinds of indicators on our agenda itself, if we can point directly to specific work. It's usually going to be in the reports though, I think. So if you're talking about curriculum, or if you're talking about, you know, academic excellence and innovation committee, that really falls into strategic objective number one. So, anyway, so I'm feeling good about that tonight. I will just let you know that, just remind you that on Tuesday night, we have a big joint meeting with a pretty heavy agenda, and that we will be talking, we'll be hearing from Dorsey Yearley about her findings after, and recommendations after conducting a pretty extensive special education review. So, we know that's going to be an important meeting. We will have a review of the action plan. In other words, under each of those strategic objectives on that strategic plan, there are a list of initiatives, and we've taken it a step further to identify who's going to do what, when, next to those initiatives, and that's what you'll receive on Tuesday night. We are also, I'm going to present my goals, and I'm missing one other thing.
QPO?
Yes, the QPO proposal. And so, it could be a busy evening for us. Hopefully, an off-night for the Red Sox. I haven't looked that far ahead. So, that's important. Debbie Dixon's doing a great job as our new special ed director. It's pretty amazing. I mean, she's been here for a week and a half, and she's already really getting a good understanding of our system. I think it's actually been really helpful that we're doing this review while Debbie's just coming in. I think it's really, really helpful, because she's gaining all sorts of insights, and while she's forming the relationships with the staff, so that's been a very positive transition. Yes, as Barbara mentioned, and I think Beth alluded to a little bit, the security training, we feel like it went really well. We did ask for feedback from the faculty and received it, and one of the things that they said was they felt empowered by this process, that it's, instead of being told in the event of a lockdown, you lock your doors and you go and hide in the corner, it's a more proactive strategy, and it's actually current best practice. So I feel good about that. I feel good about the fact that we did that with all of our teachers from across the district, from Dover, from Sherburne, and from the region. They all got the same message. And to respond to one of their concerns though, or not concerns, but something that was pointed out, was that they don't want us to, no, just drop this. They want us to be sure that, you know, that we follow up on any kind of facility things that might have come to light as we practiced these, we went through these exercises, and also that they still have opportunities to talk more about what to do if we had a kind of crisis. So, to that end, we have reunited the emergency response team for the district, and that is, that is a big team, but it has counselors, administrators from all four schools, it has myself, police officer, actually, police officers from both towns are invited, and together, we're looking at our existing protocols. So, every teacher, every person in the district has a kind of an emergency preparedness book with tabs on what to do in this event and what to do in that event, and so this committee is going to take time to look at that. We're discussing the importance of our connecting, connecting between schools. If we have kids of concern that need additional supports, we want to make sure that they get it and that they don't fall off the radar, and that we're continuing to support them. We had some discussions about how do we, how do we make sure we, it's not just identifying who kids that we're concerned about, it's taking that next step and making sure that they are continuing to get support and not falling through those cracks. So, and that can sometimes be difficult with kids who are struggling. They don't make it easy to get to know them always. So, this was a really good and productive meeting this afternoon, and we're going to continue to have those meetings. That group's going to continue to have conversations, to make sure that we're keeping on our toes, having conversations, for example, about unification, in the event that the building evacuated quickly, and how will we reunify our students with their families? That kind of stuff frankly hasn't been worked on in the district for many, many years, and if it has, I can't find it. So, we are working with the police on that. This emergency response team is the place to do those things, so I'm really happy that we're doing that. Each of the buildings has a crisis response team, and one of the things that's important in this process is making sure that the communications from that emergency response team make it out to the staff, so it makes it out by way of the crisis response team, and then the principals also communicate with their staffs anything that's new in the district. We're also looking at some of our facility upgrades, and we're just not totally there yet on things like, all of our doors are equipped to lock, classroom doors, but there are other steps that you could conceivably take, small steps, small measures, to kind of a double bracing of the doors, and so we're looking at that. I don't think it's a budget buster by any stretch, but we want to make sure that we have the right equipment that will work. So, again, that came up in this meeting that was based on feedback from people, so I feel really good about that. And I want to thank Synergy Solutions, they did a great job, and the police departments, both Sherburne and Dover, have representatives for those trainings. I was especially proud of the fact that I was blogging.
And tweeting.
And tweeting, but I thought the blogging was really especially cool, until my daughter told me that was really 2012 dead. So, once again, I'm not on the cutting edge of technology, but I am going to try and use that as a mechanism for writing to people and getting to know people. And I personally always felt it was important to know who was in charge of the school and what they stood for and what their philosophy was, and I think parents and families and teachers will have an opportunity to get to know me better, because I will, if they're following me on Twitter, they are anyhow, but they'll also, through the blog, is a little more kind of narratives or cool articles that I've found, things like that. So, I'm pretty psyched about that. Hopefully, you receive the central office newsletter. I think that's the first time we've done that.
That looks great.
So, that was kind of neat for a debut, and I hope we can do better with that. One of the things that we, that I mentioned in there is the fact that we will have a communication committee, and that communication committee is going to ask people, so what's working for us and what isn't, as far as communication goes. We know, we know that people get a lot of information, and their bandwidth is narrow these days, because they're overloaded with information. So we want to make sure that however we're communicating with people, the most pertinent information, we want people to know where to go to find that. So, that's kind of the role of that communications committee. We are looking for a parent volunteer to, or a community volunteer for that matter, somebody who has experience with communications. So, I mentioned that in that newsletter, which I think was opened by over 2,100 people, so there's a lot of people who saw it, and my phone's not lighting up, so I don't know if it was buried too deep in there perhaps. So, but I'm excited about that, and that also connects very much with that I mentioned before, that strategic objective number three. I just want to mention that when I do, I do these quarterly visits, I've mentioned them many times before to you, it's not the only time I go in the school, but it's the time that I go in with a specific mission. In that case, to go in and see the teaching and learning, to really observe it. There's two things that happen. I get a better sense of what the experience is like for the kids in the classroom, and the teacher is validated. These teachers work incredibly hard every single day and night, and it's important for them to know that the superintendent will take time to come and see what they're, you know, what they're working so hard on, on behalf of the kids. So I did have the, we made an effort to visit as many new teachers as we could that day. It's not always easy. People's schedules change, they may have specials, so it doesn't always work out perfectly, but we did have some nice visits that day. I also was very lucky in that I was there for Get Up and Move Day, which was really cool. I didn't move very much.
You cheered everyone on.
But I was, I was moving in spirit, and I was, I was so impressed. The kids seemed really happy, and I mentioned that precess in my comments there. To me, that's where, that's where the pay dirt is. When I get out of my car and I hear joy at Pine Hill School, that suggests to me that something really good is happening, even if it's precess, even if it's just running around and being kids. They don't have phones in their hands, they don't have computers in their hands, they are just being kids and socializing, and that to me is hugely important. So again, Barbara, nice job with that. And then you see the upcoming events, so that's pretty much it for me.
I had a question about the sleep and start times that were, that was mentioned in your newsletter, and I've been hearing that a lot from parents. It's definitely on the radar. So can you elaborate a little bit about what your expectations are coming out of that committee and what the plan is there?
Absolutely. So, the start time topic is very hot these days. Many, many school systems are looking at it, or have looked at it, and as the superintendent in Easton, I looked at it, went, in fact, picked it up at almost the identical spot that we're at, right here at Dover Sherburne, which was they had put together a committee and done all this research, and then they decided not to really move on it, and people were like, that's it, that's the end of it? And that's what I heard over and over as I came in last year. People want us to revisit it. But that said, I also understand all too well, from early experience in my career, that it's not always prudent to try and put together a committee of 30 people or 20 people to solve big questions, because you run around and around and around, and debate and debate and debate, and you never reach any kind of conclusion. So, given that this committee was in place two years ago, or two and a half years ago, and that they did a great deal of research, most of that research I'm familiar with from my past experience, and they had a broad swath of representation, I don't think it's necessary to go through that entire process all over again. I think it makes much more sense, I think it's more energy and time-efficient to look at what that committee put together, perhaps revisit the surveying, probably revisit the surveying and see what people have to say, and look at potential models for change. But I need to preface that with, or, you know, just make this caveat, that there aren't any easy solutions out there. If there were, we'd all do it. I think people sometimes think there are, and I've spent a lot of time on it, there aren't easy solutions, because usually it means a couple of possibilities. Flipping, flipping elementary with high school. One side feels great about that, the other side doesn't feel so great about it. Parents of elementary people tend to be concerned that their kids are going to be out at bus stops before the sun rises and the bitter cold, behind snowbanks, and that when their children, little children get home, that their older siblings aren't going to be available to greet them. So that's on one side of it. On the other side of it, you have the parents who say, my kids are exhausted, and the research shows clearly that teenagers need more rest. And so, it's one of those loaded issues to run them both at the appropriate time, say they both were going to start at eight, means running two sets of buses, which, I mean, we know. We know how difficult our budgets are to build, and that $30,000 swing can be significant, never mind, you know, close to a million. So, it's a loaded issue, but my hope is that we can get that committee together soon, and that we can start to look at that data. And by soon, I mean in the next few weeks, that we start reaching out to people and making sure that our meetings are set on the calendar. So that's where we are. I do think that there are places that the last group didn't necessarily look. There are, it doesn't always have to be one way or the other. There are some creative solutions that are out there that I've seen, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we come up with.
I understand they just went to this in Wayland, and I was talking to someone who's a teacher there, and she was saying it's actually quite hard for the little kids, because now they're starting
because now they're starting school earlier, but for those who go to extend a day and have parents who work, they're still getting picked up at six o'clock at night. And that's, for those little, little guys, that's a really long day. So they're trying to figure out how to navigate that. So like you said, I think it's really, it's tricky.
And lest we forget our teachers.
Right.
We have teachers who would be tremendously impacted by this. So it's just, it's important, I think, for you as school committee members to, to, to understand the complexities of the issue because I think people will come to you and say, so are you going to get that changed? And it's really not going to be that simple. It is, I wish it was. That would make, my life would be so much easier if things went that way, but it never seems to. But I will give it a full faith effort and look at all the possibilities.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I've gotten some good feedback on the newsletter.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Great job.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, you know who helps me a lot? You people. Beth and Cheryl.
I also heard some nice comments about the parent coffees, the people really appreciated those.
Oh, good. That's good to hear. And I appreciate those of you who were able to come and I know that they don't always work time-wise, so they're not etched in stone in terms of, if it's a parent coffee at Pine Hill, for example, we had Dover parents at the Pine Hill coffee, which is absolutely fine. It's really a chance, again, for people to hear what's going on in the district from the top level and to, to hit me with those questions, including things like what's happening with start time. Because if they get that information, it's a great opportunity to dispel myths. Because I understand what goes on, on at Farm Pond or on the soccer fields, you know, people talk, the information can get distorted, it's like the telephone game. So I view it as an opportunity to connect with people, so thanks for saying that.
Yeah, and one thing I noticed, I was at the Pine Hill parent coffee and it was really nice how a lot of people's concerns fit under the strategic objectives. I feel like everything is very coherent and what we're working on is what is on people's minds, especially the social emotional learning.
Definitely.
And it's flowing over into the middle school as well. Because I have a middle schooler for the first time, so there is that kind of cohesiveness at the guidance advisory council meeting and at the guidance night, all these same topics. So I think that we've set the stage here at Pine Hill and it's, you know, continuing up with this, with the parents and the same type of concerns brought up everywhere.
We are, we are kind of a difficult spot in our society. It's not unique to Dover and Sherburne at all. I'm sure you can attest to that, Amanda, from your experiences, but the kind of emotional challenges that kids are exhibiting are unusual and it strikes me as extraordinarily high incidence of these in comparison to, say, 20 years ago. And nobody's really quite sure why. A lot of speculation about the impact of phones, phones on families. Has anyone ever been to a restaurant recently and seen the whole family sitting there with some device in their hand? That's a subs, that's actually an inadequate substitute for family connection time. And kids need those subtle connections. They need that eye contact, a parent saying, that's not how we operate, the little things. But if we're too engaged as the adults on these things, or if the kids are, a lot of that is missing. So I've, I've heard a lot of interesting insights into that. I don't think anyone has the exact answer, but being deliberate in making sure that we're looking at the whole child, that we are not losing sight at all of the importance of academics and excellence and rigor, that's, that's, that's never not going to be important to us, because it is. We care about that, but we also care about that other side of the ledger and we have to continue to keep a focus on that.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, Don.
Good evening, everyone. I think I have for you your first financial statement for the fiscal year. Even though we're in October, we're still finalizing some things, so I'm not going to make any broad projections on our expenditure status at this juncture in time. A lot of our salaries are encumbered, so you're starting to see that we're probably going to be close to on budget for our salaries. We still need to encumber, as we mentioned, Ms. Dixon just started, so she hasn't hit your payroll yet, as well as your accounts payable. Shared staff retired this summer, so as you remember, you had a point five in your budget for your accounts payable. We had reduced it to point three in this budget. We further reduced it to a point two with some of the reorg of staffing that we've done in our office. So there will be a little bit of savings there that will show once I encumber the central office person in your financials, along with our 10-month employees. We share a lot of employees across the three schools. Some sit in here, some sit in the region, some sit in Dover. So this is about the time that we start doing the, the cross billing to all the different budgets and we'll get that set up for you in November. But we're looking like we're going to hit almost at budget, but have a little bit of cushion. On the expenditure side, obviously it's really early, so we've, you know, got our school up and running, but some of the day-to-day things that we're still, will encumber over the time are still sitting there. And the biggest one you'll see is in sped services. So with the, with the vacancy of our sped director for about five weeks, a lot of those contracts haven't been sort of set up yet. So once all those are set, when Debbie has a chance, a lot of that number will be encumbered, we just haven't, haven't done that yet. Been working closely with her and she definitely is a fast learner and is, is really going to be a huge help on the financial side because she's sort of really does the education side, but also values the budgetary side. So that'll be a great partnership. That holds true also with your out-of-district. We, she's finalizing, looking all over the cases. There are still some placements being finalized, so the majority of your out-of-district placements that we know now are encumbered and you can see we still have a little bit left, which will help us if we have additional placements. And I wanted to just highlight, if you remember, so circuit breaker, last year we used some leftover circuit breaker to help fund the budget for fiscal year 19. So we had budgeted $250,000 a circuit breaker to sort of support your budget, plus $65,000 from the prior year. So that's a little bit different than we've seen in the past and we're hoping that we'll be able to maybe have a little bit of cushion in the next year to sort of keep this going because it does provide you some budgetary relief. We're finalizing the actual circuit breaker reimbursement for, that we'll take in this year based on last year's expenses. So Debbie's looking at over those numbers that I've put together too, just before I roll them out. Because if you remember, a lot of your circuit breaker money actually comes in at the region and then we have to split it out between Dover and Sherburne and those are the calculations we're doing right now. So we'll be able to give you more, more accurate information when we meet in November. Any questions on the preliminary statement?
Can you just remind me, please, the, so when we have a savings in circuit breaker, like you said, it's $250,000, it, it stays within the special ed or circuit breaker?
So when we have, so we're right, so we had, we were able to, so remember circuit, we don't use 100% of your circuit breaker when we do the budget.
Right.
And then we had some additional savings last year. So we used all of our operating budget and left the circuit breaker in circuit breaker because that gives you the flexibility to use that money versus making circuit breaker go down to zero, then we would have given money, give money back to the town, right? So that gives us, and they were fine with that because it's building a, a little bit more of a safety net for unknown placements.
Right, but so the, the circuit breaker savings are not allowed to go back into the general budget, right?
No, no, you can't.
Oh, okay. We just chose to keep, I'm with you.
Right. No, circuit breaker money is reimbursing you for expenses you've already incurred. Typically, we, we use it to pay for out-of-district because that's predominantly where it's coming from. When I show you the staffing summary though, in November, you're going to notice that because we are keeping more students in districts, we are now seeing a little bit larger, or we are seeing some in-district circuit breaker.
Okay.
So we've had an influx of students who are on IEPs who needed extra, say, one-to-one support. We are now charging some of your one-to-one EAs to circuit breaker to alleviate the pressure on the operating budget, which we don't have. And we can do that because we are generating circuit breaker reimbursement from our in-district expenses.
Right, okay.
Right, so we're, but that, you do have latitude with that. You can only hold though, you can only hold back circuit, a much circuit breaker equal to what you took in and it's a little more complicated for Sherburne because all they give you credit for is what's in your pre-K through five, which you don't have a whole lot of activity in that, but that's the most that we can hold. So if you remember, last year we had more than that, but I had to prepay tuition. So I prepaid like 70,000 of tuition so that we were not up against, so we were at where we, where the circuit breaker that we could hold, otherwise we've had too much. And that then when they come in and certify Sherburne's free cash, we go back into their free cash.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have to, it's sort of strategic just because of the way the state looks at circuit breaker for our particular, you know, regional structure.
Okay.
But that is, the other thing that's helping you guys too is remember, circuit breaker used to be like maybe 65%, 70%. Last year we thought it was going to be 65, it went all the way up to seven, almost 73. They are giving a circuit breaker reimbursement in the estimate, in the projections right now, it's 72%. And they're estimating when they settle us up at fourth quarter, you're going to get 75%. So that's, that's how we also generate some of that extra cushion because we don't assume when we build your budget, we're going to get that.
Because there have been years where it wasn't.
Exactly, right.
Because you don't know.
Because you don't know, yeah.
And we have to wait until the budget's built at the state level, which is late.
Right, no, that makes sense, yes. Okay, thank you. I, it's complicated.
Yeah, no, it is, it is really sort of complicated, you know, so I've always had to remember that the, what you're getting now is based on your expenses. If you remember, we, the year we had to go ask the town for more money, we knew that circuit breaker would be bigger than next year, but you don't get any relief in the year when you're getting the, yeah.
Right.
So it's, it's a sort of a, we're going to quiz everyone after the term is over.
Don, you mentioned we're keeping more kids with IEPs in district. Is that pretty typical in other districts too? Or I guess I'm just curious about the thinking behind that and if we're able to support them this year?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think that obviously what the best place for any child is to stay in their home, their homeschool. So I think Pine Hill has always been really good at keeping students. Your, your statistics or your census for your pre-K through five that's out of district historically has been low. But I think what we're seeing is more severe incidences.
More kids with moderate plus needs.
Yeah.
Particularly in our preschool, which is very typical of any community we're imploding with more preschoolers with more needs.
And that's typical for what other schools?
I've talked to, we've talked to many school districts around us and they're all growing.
Medicine has really advanced and kids are kind of recovering from some of the challenges that they're born with or able to make it to school where in some instances in the past they might not have.
Yeah.
So they're, that's just kind of the, the marvels of modern science. But as Don said, we, we do believe in the, the intent of the special ed law, which is to educate students in their least restrictive environment. And that means as close to their gen ed peers as possible. It's not always possible. And so I think that Dover and Sherburne in the past few years have really been very thoughtful about who we can educate in-house and who we cannot. But it's always a disappointment if we can't, but sometimes we can. And, but if we can and the kid happens to have those kind of complex needs, could be a nurse, some students need a nurse, it could be additional therapy, all of those things that we're, those services we're delivering in-house because we are educating these kids in-house, go into, under the, the in-district circuit breaker. So it's, it's probably relatively new, in-district circuit breaker, were they even offering it three to four years ago?
No, I think they've always offered it. You have to, you have to isolate what services are being provided for a child and then it has to exceed the foundation, four times the foundation, which means you have to exceed about $44,000. So I think now because we're having more students who need more help, we are exceeding the four times foundation and are able to file for circuit breaker reimbursement, both here and at the, at all, actually all schools in the district now are seeing some in-district circuit breaker that we had not seen in previous years.
And I know I've said this before, but it's a little-known fact that circuit breaker actually developed out of Sherburne and Dover Sherburne. Perry Davis, the superintendent, who was a special educator himself originally, always struggled with the fact that it was easy to identify kids because he'd have these huge hits in the budget and everyone would know in such a small system who was costing that much money. So the circuit breaker kind of allows us to not hone in as much on those big ticket costs and it's taken hold, it's considered the norm, people expect the circuit breaker reimbursement. So that's kudos to Perry Davis.
When was that?
That was probably in the 90s, I would say.
And that's common practice now?
That's statewide. Everyone applies for circuit breaker.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of the budget.
Okay. Oh, sorry, yes.
I just have one question. So if you're doing a house setting for special ed against circuit breaker, don't you lose the true sense of what your operating budget is?
You, you can, but it's why we, why I feel comfortable doing that as an expense as the student's going to roll off, you're not going to have that expense.
Okay, you're offsetting expenses that aren't permanent.
Yes, so, so what we try to do is find cases where we can identify expenses associated with a in-district child who's getting circuit breaker and part of his or her services is what we put to circuit breaker.
Okay, so you do spend against circuit breaker.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Nope, exactly. And we do that at all four schools, yeah.
All right, thanks, Don. That brings us to the October 1st annual enrollment report.
Yes, so you have, this is our first run. So when we put together the budget paperwork, your folders, your binders, we always include a more specific breakout of enrollments in our projections. That's when we start to project what we think our class sizes will be. We use the one-year model or the three-year model, some of you will remember that. This really is just a snapshot of where we are on October 1st. That's the date that the state sets that we submit this information. So it's still subject to change. We had students come and go this week, so I don't know necessarily at Pine Hill, but I'm saying within the district. So it's not etched in stone, but as a snapshot, on October 1st, we were at 379 students. So last year we were at 397 and you can see where we were across the board. So at one point we had 432 students. So, you know, sometimes we hear, you know, do we have enough room at Pine Hill? Well, we had 432 at that time and I think there, if you spun it back even more than 10 years, there was probably an even higher number. So we're actually, our average for the 10 years is 391, so we are definitely lower. So we have to factor in those, those numbers when we, when we look at our budget and our projections for next year. There's no question about that.
I will just add though, that our one-year growth projection was at 380. So that proved to be a good baseline for us, a three-year growth would have put us at 392. So I think the three- So I think the three-year growth is still taking that into account, that one year where, um, a lot of our schools had the pike, spike. Uh, so if you remember last year, we gave you sort of the one growth, um, the one-year growth percentage, the three-year, and then we did a split. And that's sort of really what helped us, um, streamline how we decided to, um, sort of staff each grade level last year. And I'll just highlight that fourth grade was the one that we reduced, thinking that we might have class sizes up to twenty-four. Well, that turned out to not, um, we thought we'd have seventy-one in that grade, we only had sixty-four. So that turned out to be a really good decision, um, for us because had we not, then that would have been, uh, those class sizes would have been below your, your guidelines. So I don't know what, what made that, you know, not have the normal growth, but it actually fell into our favor, um, based on that. So I think other than that, the numbers are, came in where we expected them to.
That was the section we cut.
Right.
So we, you remember, we were worried about how that would impact us.
Yeah.
Turned out okay.
And our town census has, uh, historically been a great predictor of our incoming kindergarten class, so obviously, we're looking at those numbers for next year.
Do you look at the preschool numbers as well? When you, when you do, uh, the projections, like the kids who are going to be coming from the preschool into the kindergarten?
It's harder, it's harder, Jen, because the, um, they can come anywhere between three and five and they might be in outside preschools, they might not even be in ECDC, they may be in Dover or in ADIC. And so the preschools are tough for us to get a real, um, glimpse of, but the town census on who's, who's born.
Easy age, right.
And the, and the town census, I can look right now and know how many three-year-olds are in Sherburne, four-year-olds, et cetera. So I can, uh, you, you know, we, we, we know the, um, the projections.
Preschool's optional.
For the, um, the younger children.
Preschool's optional.
Right. I was wondering if you combined the census data with preschool data to get the most accurate? But I guess you don't really need it.
Uh, uh, Sherburne's pretty strict about everyone filling out the town census, so it's, it's turned out, again, sometimes there's change within those families, uh, but historically, we found the number of families who leave Sherburne are miraculously matched with new families, so it, e- even, even though the bodies might not be the same, the number, the projection is, is very reliable.
So any other questions about the enrollments? Again, it's a snapshot, so it's early.
Interesting. It looked, I noticed it looked like a kindergarten class, this is one of the largest kindergarten classes. Um, it looked like what was in the, you know, on the higher end and I just, um, wondered if that trend will continue for the next couple of years or?
Definitely something to, to, to watch. Um, but I think what you'll notice is, is if you look at, uh, the numbers through the years, there always seem to be these kind of outlier numbers. And they just pop, pop up like, for example, um, you know, we had a sixty-six in, in, uh, fifth grade in fourteen, fifteen, we were up to eighty-one last year and eighty-two this year. But, um, but then those drop off. If you look at our, our, um, third and second and first grade numbers, they drop off considerably. So it's just, these bubbles come along. So we'd, I'd want to see kind of a, a, a longer trend of that before I get nervous. And that's why when people say, do you think we need to put an addition on the school? It's, it's so hard to know because you'd have to see a real pattern and so, and you can't get that off of kindergarten. And you need it like kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and then you might be able, because then you have that formula that factors all these things in. That's why that, that one-year, uh, projection and the three-year projection and even the, the quasi-projection between is such a great tool. And, uh, we can thank Bill for that.
Mm-hmm.
Bill McCallbough. It's a, it's a good tool for, um, calculating.
And it accounts for our growth over time. So for example, our eighty-two fifth graders started as a cohort of forty-nine. You know, we, 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 not, not just the fluctuating cohorts that start kindergarten with us, but we pick up children over time, uh, with each cohort.
Yeah.
That's a great point. So you know that you can go backwards, right? Pretty easily up the chain, and you can see. So that's true.
What about staying on top of developments that are coming into town and the projections that are expected of students from those developments and what years they will hit? Is there a, a formula right now or how are we approaching?
And that's, that's a little harder to do. I mean, the, um, the, the, um, developers have their calculations and they've shared those calculations when they did their presentation, for example, on the, uh, the, um, planned development on Coolidge Street. Um, but even that's really tricky because if you think about it, they had a planned development on, um, Whitney Street that was in the works probably fifteen years ago and is just now starting to make progress. So it's just so hard to know. It's just really difficult to know.
It's also difficult to know how accurate those numbers are. They're coming from a developer, so I just.
Yeah. And, and, that's true. And i- i- in my past experience, they built, um, uh, an Avalon project in Easton. It was really, really big. And, um, and they had another project before that, a development before that with apartments and they were really concerned about, you know, how many families would move in. And a strange thing happened, the numbers didn't go up very much. I'm talking about the first development. And when they looked into it, they realized that a lot of the kids were living with their grandparents and they basically moved across town. So we didn't pick up additional students. The, the, their parent, the children's parents moved out of the grandparents' house and brought their children with them, but.
So it was the same kids?
Same kids.
So it was the same kids. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen here, but that's how complicated it gets. It's really difficult to know. Um, we, we know that we, what's that?
You hope that happens.
Well, you, you, you know, I just think, I don't think it's as concrete as, as people think, unfortunately. What we do have to, that's why schools have to be nimble.
Right.
We have to be creative. Sometimes you find yourself in a jam. That has happened in school systems around here and you just have to respond as quickly as you can.
I read recently about an interesting contract with Hopkinton and a developer that, um, they put in their contract when he was building the unit, said if the number of students within six years exceeded a certain amount, then he would reimburse the school system a, a chunk of money. I thought that was an interesting way to approach it. I, I just, I thought that was very interesting. But theirs is, they really got a lot of students. They went above that number that they originally projected, well beyond that. And so they're going to, they're asking for that money right now, which is why it was in the news recently. They're, they're going to the developer and I guess it'll, it'll be seen if he makes good on that or not, but.
Ho- Hopkinton is a desirable community.
Yeah.
So is Sherburne.
I just think it's interesting and I am trying to stay on top of some of these things, but it's hard to know like exactly what the timeframes are and like you said, how many students will be in those units. We just, we don't know, but we have to stay nimble and we also have to be aware at the same time when we're thinking forward.
And it's also not going to happen overnight, which is good. I mean, we talked about this before, that it's, it's going to take some time and hopefully we'll be able to get some sense.
Which is why Hopkinton but built six years into it. They said after six years, we'll look and see how much growth. And the first couple of years were okay and then it was kind of a influx.
But they, but they had a huge, uh, development in Hopkinton.
Right. It's not on the same scale, so that's what I just thought.
And here's the thing that's interesting is that, so if we heard, for example, a hundred students were going to move into Sherburne, you'd say, oh, my gosh, we can't handle a hundred kids at Pine Hill, although we have had a hundred more than we have now.
And they would not be at Pine Hill.
But they're not all going to Pine Hill.
Right.
Right? So some will be at the high school and some will be in the middle school, so.
The more imminent worry from the perspective of the Sherburne Safety Committee is the impact on our, our resources of police and fire and other town resources.
That is a.
For, for any growth, uh, is, is going to exasperate those resources.
That's an important consideration. Absolutely. Which came up at the town meeting. So there you go.
Thank you.
Can we do the next one?
Uh, yes.
So, um, uh, the school committee does, um, we do actually have one out-of-district student here and thus, uh, we need to approve, uh, the tuition. Oh, sorry, yes.
That's okay, or do you want to go ahead?
Sorry, no, no, no. No, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. I had, I flipped the page, um, and went right to mine without looking at the agenda. I apologize.
No problem.
So, um, the FY budget, uh, development guidance.
So, uh, we kicked off the budget last week, um, for all of our buildings to start, um, doing their, um, updating and reviewing of, uh, where we will be for next year. So this is an opportunity for school committee, before we present you with the first budget, uh, next month, to share any concerns or wishes or desires that you have, um, regarding the budget so that we can, um, take that into consideration when we build your first, uh, first draft. So this is an opportunity so that you're not seeing the budget for the first time and saying, oh, what about this? Oh, what about this? Um, if, so if you had anything that you wanted us to take in consideration, this is sort of the opportunity to, um, have that discussion.
Um, have you started the process of looking into air conditioning?
That was, yeah.
Cause it, it actually came up at the, um, the parent coffee and Adrian Hill was there from Dover and he had a lot of knowledge about that project there. So it sounds as if there's sort of a sense of what it takes to make that happen.
Right. So that'd be in your capital, um, your capital budget that we'll, that we also will put together and present for you in November. Um, so we have been working on getting, having a couple of contractors come out and giving us their thoughts on what kind of systems would be feasible to do here and preparing us some quotes. So I do have two quotes right now, but we're, just, we just want to review them internally first, but then we'll present them to your building subcommittee. Who is, who's your building subcommittee? Angie and, okay. So, um, we'll share that with you when we sit down and, um, walk through sort of what we are planning for fiscal year twenty and then the other years, um, and start seeing what potentially we can, what groundwork we can lay, um, to see where we can go with this. Um, the two numbers I have are pretty drastic right now, so I think that's why we want to look at them a little bit closer before we share anything. Um, sometimes it's hard to get contractors to come out and if they're not completely interested, they'll just give you a really high number. So that's what we're just trying to equate, um, what we have here. But yes, we have a great, uh, timeline and path to follow based on what we did at Chikering. So we won't have to recreate the wheel there. Um, it's one of Adrian's favorite things to talk about, so.
And he did.
Yeah.
He was.
He was.
Yeah.
Don, it will get you off the topic of windows for a change.
Exactly. We've, we've moved over. So, um, so yes, that is something that we've been, we've been doing some work on our end to be able to share with your subcommittee and then later to the whole committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great. I was going to ask the same question. Yeah. Thank you. And so if we, if you think of things, you can email them, email them to me, I'm happy to pass them on.
Yeah. So some of the things we talked about tonight, sort of the interventionist and some of the new things, so then we'll look at that. So, um, and, and show you where we have grant funding. So I think one of the pieces of the puzzle that we've tried to do, and I think we did a summary of grants for you last year, is that when you look at just your operating fund, you're not seeing the whole school picture because we do have some other sources of revenue that help us, um, run Pine Hill. So we'll do a better job of showing you the whole picture so you understand that you've got your, um, SED IDA two forty grant that pays for some of our special education assistance. We have the REAP grant here that only Sherburne has, based on where you are, um, you know, rural.
Rural schools.
Rural school system. Um, you know, your Title I is where we use some of the interventionist. So we'll try to put all the pieces of, uh, the puzzle together for you so you see the complete picture and understand what we're using the other funds for, um, to make your, um, to make your, you, you know, the, the educational scenario here, what it takes to put that all together. Cause I think it's important, um, and you mentioned, I think, we don't always share the grants and if those grants ever went away, we would be at a deficit in some areas because of how we rely on them. So I think it's important for school committee to realize that there are other pieces out there to your budget that, um, isn't necessarily coming from, um, the Sherburne, um, taxpayer side.
Any other thoughts? Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. All right. Now, thank you.
Okay. So, um, we do have, uh, non-resident students at Pine Hill and so we're asking that the school committee approve the tuition rate for FY nineteen.
So let me correct, it's actually fiscal year twenty.
Sorry.
Um.
Yes.
And, yeah, so we'll have this just in case.
FY twenty.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so you're setting it, um, now so that when we build the budget, we have that either for Dover to use for their budget building and then for you guys to use for yours. So that's why we do it, um, before the budget season.
Cause it is, they're students from Dover.
Yes.
And this is only, um, a student from Dover, this is not, do students from other towns?
This is, right. This is not school choice.
Just, right.
Yeah.
I want to clarify, yeah, so this is just.
Right.
And so.
Would apply to anyone who we accepted.
Well, we would have to accept them.
Right.
So you'd have to essentially allow someone to tuition in.
Right. But this would be the number for any of those?
That would be the number.
Yes.
So it's not necessarily just someone from Dover.
Exactly.
But in this case, the one person that we do have is?
We had, we had a program housed at, uh, Pine Hill School that's no longer housed there and the decision was made at the time to allow the student to stay at Pine Hill. Uh, we may not have this, uh, need to present it to you in the future.
This might be a temporary.
Yeah.
So, um, because we don't do school choice, this is kind of an isolated.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. This is where we.
If it was school choice, you'd get five thousand.
School choice, whatever year?
We, yeah, you don't, you don't participate in school choice.
Right, right.
So this is, this is a, a difference.
Case by case.
Yes, right. And so the, the tuition rate's based on your most recent released, uh, per pupil expenditure per DSE, so that's where we pull the number from on an annual basis.
So, and that doesn't include any grant or outside sources? Not when DSE figures out our per people spending, is that based on our budget?
No, that's your, that's our net school spending that is.
Oh, so it is? Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So there's a motion.
Yep.
Are there any other questions about what this is? All right. So, um, shall I just read the motion then?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to set the tuition rate for students attending Pine Hill School from outside the district as approved by the superintendent per school committee policy, JFABE, to be eighteen thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars for the twenty, eighteen, nineteen?
No, twenty nineteen, twenty.
Nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty school year. And that further any additional support services costs be added to an individual student's tuition based on a fair share of those additional services as computed by the administration.
So just to explain that, if there's additional services above just that attending, then, um, the dis, the sending district is also billed for those services.
Would anyone like to second that? Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Great, motion passes. And then we just have, um, consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from September seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Did anyone have any questions or corrections to that? Nope? Okay, none. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the Sherburne School Committee meeting minutes from September seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Great, passes. And then we just have communications, which is for your reading pleasure. That's what I used to say. Um, and then number eleven, items for our November thirteenth meeting, um.
So it'll be the first, uh, pass of your fiscal year twenty budget. Both operating and capital.
Will we get the budget votes before, we'll get those before that meeting? MCAS? We'll talk about the MCAS. And will the CSA reps come give us a brief?
Will you give us a brief summary of the November eighth evening on that day?
Oh, sure.
You're not all going to be there?
It's my season.
Sounds birthday, but I'll find you.
And, um, if you think of anything else, you can always email me in the meantime. All right? All right, well then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?